I'd like to call it ordered, the water and sewer meeting for tonight. Will Councilwoman Holman lead us in invocation?
Yes.
Please stand.
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for all that you have bestowed upon us. Thank you for the goodness, Heavenly Father, that you have done for us. Thank you for bringing all of us here this evening safely. Heavenly Father, please wrap your arms around each of us and protect us. Let this council be transparent and everything that they do is good and in good taste for this county. Thank you, Heavenly Father. We ask all this in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
We've got one item on the agenda tonight, a request for approval of new sewer service by Somerville Logistics Center owner, South Carolina LLC for Somerville Logistics Center, TMS number 129-00-00-048, located in the Eastport Commerce Center near the town of Somerville. Do you have a motion?
Second.
I got a first by, first to the second, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven oh vote. Do we have another, do we have any other motions?
I motion we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now adjourned. We'll be starting the council meeting in four and a half minutes. I'd like to call it ordered, the March 18th Dorchester County Council meeting right here in Somerville, South Carolina. Will you please stand as Councilwoman Holman leads us in invocation and remain standing for the pledge?
Let's bow our heads, please. Thank you, Father, for allowing us all to come to our destination safe. Heavenly Father, be with us as we do the work of this county. Wrap your arms around us. Make sure that we are transparent and do everything in good taste and do the right things for this county. Heavenly Father, please protect our first responders as they are taking care of those that are in need and taking care of the property, Heavenly Father. We ask that you be with us, guide us, and protect us. And we ask all this in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's witness to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes from the March 4th, 2024 County Council meeting as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I got a first by Councilwoman Rank and a second by Councilwoman Hearn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven oh vote. Next on the agenda, I'd like to recognize county administrator, Mr. Jason Ward.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we have two employees that we're recognizing this evening. I'll read the First Proclamation proclaiming Ms. Barbara Williams as Dorchester County's 2023 Employee of the Year, whereas Ms. Barbara Williams has been an employee with Dorchester County since 2019. And whereas her dedication, positivity, and kindness have made a lasting impact on Dorchester County employees, sometimes in an organization, there are those who make such an indelible mark on the people they serve that their reputation precedes them wherever they go. And whereas Ms. Barbara Williams takes pride in her work going the extra mile, her professionalism keeps Dorchester County departments in top condition, helping the work environment to be professional, productive, and safe. And whereas Ms. Williams not only has a strong work ethic, but has adopted her coworkers as family, caring for them as she would her own. Her smile and kindness are contagious and are a bright spot across multiple departments. And whereas Ms. Barbara Williams' strong work ethic, personal integrity, and commitment to excellence is invaluable to Dorchester, to our Dorchester County team, we are grateful for the job she does and honored to have her working at Dorchester County Government. Now therefore, Dorchester County Council hereby proclaims Ms. Barbara Williams, Dorchester County's 2023 Employee of the Year, and commends her for her contributions toward the success of Dorchester County Government, adopted this 18th day of March, 2024 by S. Todd Fritto, Chairman, Dorchester County Council, attest Tracy L. Langley, Clerk to Council. This is a proclamation 24-04 proclaiming Mr. Ricky Jenkins as Dorchester County's 2023 First Responder of the Year, whereas Mr. Ricky Jenkins joined St. George Fire Department in 1987 as a volunteer captain until the merger that formed Dorchester County Fire Rescue. And whereas Mr. Jenkins currently serves as Dorchester County's Chief Fire Marshal, where he oversees fire code enforcement, inspections of public buildings, investigation of fires for origin and cause, fire prevention, and community risk reduction. And whereas Mr. Jenkins is a dedicated public servant who works tirelessly exhibiting passion for promoting fire and life safety, he performs his job with professionalism, compassion, and pride, going far and above the scope of his job duties. And whereas Mr. Jenkins' dedication to his department and to the citizens of Dorchester County is unmatched, he nobly serves a cause greater than himself, leaving the comforts of his home and family, demonstrating no mission is too hard and no challenge is too great. And whereas Chief Fire Marshal Ricky Jenkins is truly a servant leader, he is passionate about his faith and exemplifies Christ in all he does, he epitomizes empathy, humility, and a strong commitment to serving not only his fellow employees, but his community. Now therefore, Dorchester County Council hereby proclaims Chief Fire Marshal Ricky Jenkins, Dorchester County's 2023 First Responder of the Year, and commends him for his dedicated and outstanding service to Dorchester County, adopted this 18th day of March, 2024 by S. Todd Fritto, Chairman, Dorchester County Council, attest Tracy L. Langley, Clerk to Council.
Do I have a motion to adopt both?
So moved.
Second.
I got a first by Councilwoman Genesis, a second by Councilwoman Holman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven oh vote. Next on the agenda is adoption of proclamation number 24-05 proclaiming April 20th, 2024, Child Abuse Prevention Month in Dorchester County. We're going to read this and then we're going to do all the pictures at one time. There you go. This time I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Rank.
State of South Carolina, County of Dorchester, proclamation number 24-05 proclaiming April 2024 Child Abuse Prevention Month throughout Dorchester County, whereas South Carolina's future prosperity and quality of life depend on the healthy development of more than 1.1 million children residing in the diverse communities across our state and 39,317 in Dorchester County. And whereas preventing child abuse and neglect must be a priority that requires individuals, families, child-serving organizations, schools, faith-based groups, businesses, government agencies, and civic leaders to support the physical, emotional, social, and educational well-being of all children. And whereas child abuse is a serious public health issue with wide-ranging societal consequences, and as data shows, the link between the abuse and neglect of children and a wide range of costly medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral issues into adulthood. And whereas parents and caregivers who have a support system of family and friends know where to find public resources and understand how to remain resilient in challenging times are best equipped to provide safe nurturing environments for their children. And whereas statewide and community prevention programs serve as proven and effective ways to reduce child abuse and neglect, no matter the geographic region, race, or ethnicity, or economic status. And whereas in fiscal year 2022 to 2023, there were 8,304 substantiated Child Protective Services investigations with 14,711 children in South Carolina and 276 investigations with 486. and 276 investigations with 485 children in Dorchester County. Now therefore, Dorchester County Council hereby proclaims April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month throughout Dorchester County and encourages all South Carolinians to dedicate themselves to protecting the quality of life for every child. Adopted this 18th day of March, 2024 by S. Todd Frittel, Chairman, Dorchester County Council, attest Tracy L. Langley, Clerk to Council.
Second. I mean, so moved.
I got a first by Councilwoman Holman and a second by Councilman Crosby. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven oh vote. First, we'll start with the employees and then we'll go to one down to the Child Abuse Prevention Month theme. Mr. Ricky, come on down. Hey, the little one's got the heart. I could tell because she was going to laugh. We won't, we will not hold it against you. We won't hold it against you. A little weird, sir. I knew the little one had his heart. She's watching. She's going to tell us how to make it. Y'all are all really good.
She normally bossing us around up here.
Is that the right one? You sure that's the right one? No.
While they're taking their pictures, we want to recognize Dr. Kay Phillips. We want to recognize Kristi Bailey, Brett Camp, Kelly LaPlante, Doug Wright, Dwayne Peters, Sam Richardson, and several board members, Karen Oliver, Debbie Clark. Because this is, I want to make sure I got this right, Louise Mead, Chris Kahler, Alan Greer, and Tony Pope.
Next on the agenda is adoption of resolution number 24-10 confirming the intent of Dorchester County, South Carolina, to be reimbursed for certain expenditures related to capital projects to be financed by issuance of bonds for the design and construction of new Public Works Campus, a county-owned operated animal shelter.
So moved.
I got a first by Councilman Chenison, a second by Councilman Crosby. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just can we get a little bit further explanation, you know, specifically with regard to the animal shelter? Anybody wish to speak on that?
Yes, sir. Several of us had an opportunity to visit Aiken County to look at, among other things, a model where you would have multiple shelters operating in the county, one operated by a private entity and then one operated by the county. It's difficult often for the county to meet all of its statutory requirements in terms of the shelter. We understand that Dorchester Paw's desire to operate a no-kill shelter, we need additional capacity for our animals. And so we have an opportunity to provide a county-owned shelter that would allow us to meet those challenges. We think it can be done in an existing building. We believe it can be done in a very cost-effective manner. And I think it will provide additional capacity that would help Dorchester Paws and the county.
Thank you.
If I might just add to that, because I was one of the ones that went on a number of the visits. And there is no question the challenge with a county this size and growing, handling the volume of animals that are collected. Aiken County is not officially a no-kill shelter, but they meet probably nearly all the requirements to do that. They had ultimately a capacity within there to house somewhere between 88 and 92 total dogs, not including the cat side of that. Very clean shelter. It was pretty remarkable. And it's got a very strong support channel with the FAS, Aiken County Friends of the Animals Soci-- AFAS, right?
Friends of the Aiken County.
Yeah, Friends of the, yeah, there you go. So that have helped that. It's pretty incredible. In the same town is the SBCA, which far less capacity, oddly enough, but a privately-run shelter, nonprofit-run shelter, basically. So it's, and both of them were full of animals when we went through there. It was quite honestly amazingly different to me to see the different levels between the Aiken County and the SBCA in what they were able to provide. Again, part of it as a private entity versus a public body. So I think from our standpoint, what we hear constantly is the ability to, you know, to catch a dog and drop a dog off. And when we can't do that because the shelter is full, it's clearly at that point that we've got to do something else. Just I don't think there's any other response at this point in time.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question. If we have our own county-owned animal shelter, will that negate our contributions to Dorchester Paws?
At this point, I can't answer that question because we haven't got that far along.
To my knowledge, we haven't approved a budget, so it would be impossible to answer.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seven oh vote. Next on the agenda is the Third Reading of Ordinance Number 24-12, a supplemental ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of not exceeding 14 million aggregate principal amount limited obligation bonds for Oakbrook Tax Increment Pledge, Series 24, or 2024, Dorchester County, South Carolina, for the purpose of defraying the cost of certain infrastructure improvements within the county, fixed in form and details of the Series 2024 bonds, providing for the disposition of proceeds therefore in the matters thereof relating thereto. To give you an idea, this motion, the issuance of these bonds will provide funding for $2 million for the Somerville Asher River Preserve, 3.5 million for streetscaping, 8 million for DD2 Oakbrook Campus improvements, the remaining funds for the $10 million contribution approved for the DD2 Oakbrook Campus improvements. Did that pretty well cover everything? Just wanted to double check.
I think the only thing, just to be very clear, this is proceeds from the tax and general funding. So this is as the tax increase on the properties in that district, that increase is what actually pays this. This is not bonding that we are using up additional capacity for. This is with that, we basically forgone that revenue. I say we, Dorchester County, the town of Somerville, and Dorchester District, whose schools have forgone that increase in revenue within that tax district, and that's how these bonds are being funded.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I got a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven oh vote. Next on the agenda is a public hearing concerning the adoption of us to submit to the South Carolina Department of Commerce Division of Grants Administration on or about May 1st, 2024, for the Community Development Block Grant. At this time, I'd like to open a public hearing. And we'll start out, I would like to recognize Catherine Basha.
Good evening. I just want to clarify, tonight, we do our annual community needs assessment to just confirm that we have captured in the draft needs assessment all of the potential needs of eligible projects for community development block grant funding. And then we'll be back in the beginning of May for a public hearing on the application to fund our work administratively to help develop those projects and to seek grant funding. And tonight, we have an example of how we've been able to put together a project this particular year. So this year, the state CDBG funding program, they are using an estimated of funding that's available based on the federal 2023 budget, because we don't have another one adopted quite yet. But as you can see, there is close to 17 million dollars available for funds. So they have these different categories of types of projects that can be developed. In the spring, we can apply for funding for infrastructure-type improvements with a maximum award that has been increased up to a million dollars per project. And then in the fall, we can do in community enrichment-type projects. The target for that, we pulled together, and it's in the needs assessment, some of the vulnerable populations and some of the housing challenges that the county has, and those are the things that we try to develop projects to address. So in part of what we have to do in developing projects is to document that a project area that's being served, the beneficiaries in there meet those low-moderate income thresholds. And in the needs assessment, you'll see where we've prepared a map of where those concentrations are. And if you look down in the very right-hand corner by Somerville, you'll see where there is a concentrated area of LMI households that we are currently developing a project to serve. So areas of need that we can serve are infrastructure, that's new water lines, upgrades of water lines. You know, sometimes they're older and they're not sized appropriately for the pressure for hydrants, housing affordability, safety issues. And then in the fall, when we have our community enrichment-type projects, we can look at things like facilities for public safety, health, food, and medical access. During COVID, we did do some CDBG funding to help expand the amount of foods that was made available to the different pantries in the county so that we could increase that food distribution. And then also, we can do economic development projects. And if there's a neighborhood revitalization plan in place, we can work on implementation of those plans. Just some examples, expanding the potable water and public sewer to the rural areas where you have well and/or septic issues, replacing those deteriorating or undersized water and sewer lines, improving the flow to the hydrants, implementing the neighborhood plans, upgrading community facilities such as libraries, community centers. I believe the CDBG funds were used for the St. George Library several years ago. And then providing accessible medical care facilities and expanding the food access. But one of the examples that we're going to show you this evening is where in the last several weeks, the county has been working alongside of us to really develop an actual project. And we'll be submitting an application for that here at the end of the week.
Okay. Thank you, Catherine. I just wanted to run through the project concept that we came up with, which is in the Stratton Capers neighborhood, Stratton Capers 2. If you recall the map that we looked at, that was the census tract that was highlighted in red that had the highest concentration of low and moderate income. And what we did is we reached out to Water and Sewer Department. We knew that there were a number of projects already programmed in the CIP. And we were trying to see whether or not we can use this community development block grant program as leverage to help with our projects that were in the CIP. And we found that there was a water improvement, a water line improvement project within the Stratton Capers area, particularly affecting Eucalyptus Avenue, Parchmont Avenue, Tanglewood Drive. Tanglewood Drive, Apple Tree, and Plum Branch avenues, and Mangrove Drive. And the project area is identified in the boundary that's shown in green. We had to break out, for purposes of this application, the commercial properties. So those are all the areas that are shaded in the in the in the green color that front on Ashley Phosphate. But all the residential properties in the back, within the Phase One area, do meet the qualifications based on the income surveys that were done within the last two weeks. And this is an example of the surveys that we walked around the neighborhood. We actually did this through a combination of canvassing, door-to-door visits to each household. And we also had an information tent up. We did this in three evenings, starting two weeks ago. Letters were sent out to all the property owners ahead of time and and the residents. We also had a signage identified as you come into the neighborhood. And we did that two weeks in advance. So actually, when we did the canvassing door-to-door, we had a very good response. People opened the door and they were willing to talk with us. We had a Spanish-speaking interpreter that went with us. Seventy percent of this community is Spanish-speaking, so we definitely needed the outreach there. We did put the letters when we mailed those out, both in Spanish and English, and we had the survey both in Spanish and English. We did, out of the approximately ninety households that we had to visit, we did get an eighty percent response. And seventy percent of the folks that live in that census tract do meet the low and moderate income requirements. So we're well above the fifty-one threshold that's required by the Commerce Department. We will be submitting this application. Keep going, hitting the wrong button. The next step is to submit the results of our survey to the Department of Commerce by this Friday and along with the proposed project that we're looking to submit. And one thing I failed to mention is the total project cost is about a million and one-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand. So we're seeking, our our grant request would be for up to a million dollars. So if we are successful, out-of-pocket cost for the county, for the engineering, and some of the work in front of the commercial properties would be one-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand is what we're estimating. Part of the requirement would be, once the Department of Commerce signs off on the application in the pre-approval process, we would then have to come back before County Council on April fifteenth and hold a public hearing on our particular project. And then the formal grant application will be submitted April twenty-second. Yay, you got it right.
Yes. So as far as the community needs assessment, you all have a draft. There is a draft. I will leave a copy of it in the back of the room, but also it's posted on the county website. We'll leave that open for a couple more weeks if there's any additional input put beyond this evening in terms of what we haven't captured or what we need to clarify in that. And with that being finalized, we'll have that ready to go with a full application. I didn't do it. Full application is is submitted for this particular project in late April. Any questions?
If I'm not mistaken, from what I've been told and what I've read on this, this project will take the water line to eight-inch water line, which currently goes as small as a two-inch water line in that neighborhood, which I would say doesn't constitute ability for fire hydrants or anything, correct?
That's correct. So that's what we're looking to address. And I really thank Brian and also the COG should be commended for going out, working with the property owners, going door-to-door, working with a single property owner that had several properties that they were able to get in contact with to make sure that they had the level of participation to allow us to have a strong application.
Any other questions? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Does anyone wish you to speak? We'll give it three minutes. Please give your name and name and address, please. Come forward, sir.
Good afternoon.
Yes, sir.
Bear with me. I've lived in the Dorchester area right now for fifty years. I've seen good and I've seen bad growth. I want to thank you all for the path that was put in behind our Eagle Creek, the walking path, one-point-two million dollars.
This is on, this is be speaking on the public hearing for the community development project. This is not open yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's no problem, sir. Anybody wants to speak on, actually wants to speak on this project?
I apologize.
No problem, sir. Anybody else who wants to speak on this project? I'm going to close the public hearing then. Next on the agenda, we got a public hearing, a third reading, rezone request number nine-ten for Jamie Moore to rezone twenty-seven-point-eight-eight acres located at one-forty-two Water Wheel Road near Ridgeville, TMS number ninety-nine-dish-zero-zero-dish-zero-zero-dish-zero-seven-four from agriculture residential, AAR to commercial light industrial district CLI. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and recognize Ms. Ryerson, Planning and Zoning Director for our staff report.
Yes, sir. This is a twenty-eight acre parcel of land located, as you're headed out of Somerville on seventy-eight, you cross Cypress Swamp, it's just on the right, at Water Wheel Drive. Highway seventy-eight has recently been improved in that area. It's providing direct access for this piece of land to seventy-eight. There's an existing landscaping business on there. It's been there for a while. It was established under the absence of control zoning, so it's considered a legal non-conforming use. But what that means is that they're not able to expand that use. If they sell the property or want to change the use, they're not able to. They're they're pretty much limited to that existing use and that existing footprint. So they're looking to rezone the property to commercial light industrial, which would bring their existing zoning into compliance. It would also allow for future expansion or change in use. The Future Land Use Map designates this area as employment mixed use, or at least the developed portion of the lot is employment mixed use, which does support commercial light industrial. And the direct access to Highway seventy-eight eliminates any concerns about it taking access off of a residential road. So staff looked at the request and recommended approval. Planning Commission also, when they reviewed the request, recommended approval.
Any questions?
Just from the standpoint of the, it was in PDB at the last meeting, and we also recommended. I don't, you may have said that, but.
No, I didn't. Thank you.
So PDB also recommended unanimously recommended approval.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, I'd like to have anybody who would like to speak on this particular project. You'll be given three minutes. Please give your name and address. I'd like to close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and a second discussion? All in favor? Seven-o vote. Next on the agenda is a public hearing at third reading for ordinance number twenty-four dash thirteen, an ordinance to amend Dorchester County zoning and land development standards, ordinance number oh-four dash thirteen, as previously amended with respect to Article Five, Section five-point-four-point-two-A, determination of front yard for regular lots. The purpose of this amendment is to clarify determination of the front yard on access easements. I'd like to open the public hearing and again, recognize Ms. Ryerson from Planning and Zoning Development for our staff report.
Yes, sir. This is just a cleanup to the ordinance, provides you here with a quick change in the language. So the existing language talks about how you determine your front yard. So the front yard is the portion nearest to the street. And what we're doing with the text amendment is clarifying where you actually take your access off of an easement. Now your front yard is determined by that easement and not the street. So we created this little graphic here just for quick reference. So if you're looking at a series of lots here, you have lots one and two that are about the street. It's very clear your front yard comes from the street. The houses are oriented towards the street. As you come down off of an ingress egress easement, Lot Four is under the current standards where the front yard is still determined by that street. So even though the lot itself is oriented towards the easement, your setbacks, which in many, many times will determine how you orient your house, is still facing the street. So this amendment brings us to Lot Three, which would allow you to orient the setbacks and the house towards that easement, allowing you to pull in and access your your house with your driveway right there. So this, we've just viewed this as a cleanup. This is something that we've kind of been struggling with a little bit over the years as people come in for building permits off of an easement. We don't see this as being a major change or or of any concern. So staff recommended approval of it, and Planning Commission also, when they reviewed it, recommended approval of it.
Any questions?
The only comment I would make again is that PDB also recommended approval. Let me, I want to clarify a little bit on this.
Yes.
This is a little bit different for anybody that's come to these meetings because the public hearing is being held at third reading in front of full council. Normally, the public hearing is held in front of the PDB. Unfortunately, the News and Post Courier didn't publish the those public hearing notices in time for us to hold them that way. So in this case, it's, again, it may seem odd to people. This is not normal, the way we do it. But but again, the the committee saw this in the same way. I think it's, it was pretty interesting because if you looked at the general oh-four thirteen and the placement of a home on a lot, we assumed that the front yard and the backyard would be bigger from a length standpoint, size-wise. But the way the ordinance was written from an easement, you basically would have really huge side yards and potentially a short front and backyard. You still have to have those setbacks to be able to fit on that that lot. Even though we have changed to the way we're defining the front, if the lot is not wide enough to meet your setbacks, you would have to turn the house because the setbacks are not correct, so, are possible, so.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Now, at this time, anyone who would like to to speak on this subject, please come forward. You're given three minutes, and please give your name and address.
Hello, hello. Is the hat not professional? Bad hair day.
I need your name and address, sir.
Kevin Nelson, two-eleven Pointer Drive.
Thanks, sir.
This is my mother, Constance Nelson, two-eleven Pointer Drive. You want to speak, you want to?
I'm not sure if we're talking about the same thing because I, my point is, like you were saying, the easel, the interior lot, and like there's a new bridge coming in Quail Arbor. Is that the same thing? Or this is a whole different subject?
A whole different subject.
Okay, because my front yard is going to be taken, some is going to be taken away in Quail Arbor with the new bridge. So that's why I was wondering if this is the same thing, like the front shell.
Just to explain this one, I guess is, and and again, if you look at the map and you look at the main street, this is only making a determination of where the front of a home would face. So if you were building or constructing a home, putting a home on a lot, this is just saying, describing what the front is in the code. It has nothing to do with an existing property.
Oh, that's why I was, okay, okay.
Okay, we wanted to make sure.
No, you're good.
Okay.
Not a problem. Thank you for coming. Anyone else who'd like to address council? I'd like to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I got a first, a Councilman Byers, and a second by Councilman Holman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven-o vote. Next on the agendas, at this time, it's, at this time, I'd like to recognize each citizen who has completed a request to address council card. You will have three minutes to speak, and please give your name and address. And first, first on the list is Susan Bagum. Baughman, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Good evening.
Hey there, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Susan Baughman. I'm the president of the Dorchester Paws Board of Directors. I live at two-two-five Oakwood Drive in Somerville. Also present is our executive director, some board members, and a staff member. If y'all want to stand, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dorchester Paws has been serving Dorchester County for over fifty years. Last year, we took in four-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty dogs and cats from Dorchester County and have attained a no-kill status. We have taken in animals from animal control, public strays, and owner-reliquished animals. We have professionals trained in animal welfare and veterinarians that are on staff to provide for care and surgeries. We provide vaccinations and spay neuters to support the community cat program. Dorchester Paws provides expert behavioral assessments and enrichments to ensure that the animals returned to the community are well-cared-for and safe. We also serve our community by providing a caretaker's cupboard and community support days providing vaccinations and microchips to owned pets. Animal care is provided three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, at least twice a day. We are open to the public three-hundred-and-fifty-five days per year and thirty-five hours a week. Our budget last year was one-point-six million, of which Dorchester County provided four-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars for their, for our services. We fundraised seventy-five percent of our budget through volunteers, donations, and grants. We would ask as a partner of Dorchester County to have an opportunity to discuss the shelter project in further detail before the county proceeds with their project and we as an organization proceed with our plans to design a new shelter. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, sir. Bob?
Chair Pinsky.
Sir?
I'm a here and a turn it down now.
No problem.
Bob Chirapinski, I'm of the Tranquil Acres. I want to thank the board for the beautiful walk, walking path that was put behind our homes. One-point-two million dollars, I think, was spent on it. Children are using it. It's a great walking path for dogs. And unfortunately, we're having a problem with homeless, four-wheelers, motorcycles. And what I'm here for this evening is to ask for your help on getting this patrolled. I don't know how you're going to go about doing this with monies or so forth, but it needs to be addressed. Because now that this door is open for us to have this as a walking path, it's leading to other problems, too. And I, my fear is for the children that are using it, the dog walkers, the mothers and fathers with the kids. We do need to have this patrolled. And I'm, hopefully, you'll be able to help us with this situation.
Mr. Ward, follow-up question with what Bob said because this is something that the Sawmill Branch Trail, we've seen for years, but Somerville Police Department covers that. Is this SPD or is this going to be Dorchester County?
So this this is Dorchester County. There are two challenges and and two ways to address it. I think it's going to be a combination of park rangers as well as law enforcement working in conjunction with them. We do have some additional park ranger positions we're adding that will bring before council for their consideration in the upcoming budget.
Okay. Do we have proper ordinance in place so that we can prohibit four-wheelers from being on these trails and?
They have, excuse me, Mr. Byers?
Yes, sir.
For interrupting you. They have posts in the ground, but they go around them.
Okay.
And, you know.
Sure.
And the speed back there is amazing. They're wide.
I'll let him get up and get after it, without a doubt.
To kind of follow up Jay with what you're saying is, one of the things that we need to do, and we can probably do relatively quickly, is at least post it that it is not for motorized vehicles. That's the first thing to do is say, and if we need to pass an ordinance and say, hey, this is not for motorized vehicles, then.
We we can get it posted.
I would imagine a couple of our friends will blue lights on top.
By the way, a shout-out to Dorchester County Police Department and codes. Fantastic job.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Mr. Ward, do we have any correspondence?
Mr. Chairman, we tried to send those items as they were received. I think council had received some information specifically about a recent change that was very positive. We're still awaiting final approval from the Congress. But I will mention that we ended up in the main report of the Army Corps of Engineers twenty-twenty-four Report to Congress. Very specifically, we had requested an increase in authorization and so provided that information to County Council. We will keep you posted as we move further along with that particular project. Only other items of correspondence that I would mention to you at this time is that we do have some additional requests before our legislative delegation want to assist with the completion of the Jedburg Fire Station. And so we'll keep you posted on that as well.
Thanks, sir. Next on the agenda, we're, we've got some special guests here and some. Thanks, sir. Next on the agenda, we're, we've got some special guests here and some, some new, new people delivering some reports here. So we're going to start with Ms. Jessica Carehart, Director of Business Services, to make a presentation on the February 2024 Monthly Budget Report.
It's good. You kind of knew.
Hi, fans. Good evening.
Nice to see a woman.
I have the February 2024 Budget Report for you all tonight. I'm going to start with the general fund. Overall budget in the general fund through February is at 84,770,995. In revenues, we've collected just over $63 million in the general fund to date through the end of February. Primarily, we're about 80, almost 87% in tax collections through into the end of February's postings. Those are primarily January's collections. So still coming in strong there. I'll say license and permits, the license and permits category, we've just started collecting business license revenue. So our business license renewals went out in February this year. So we really haven't started kind of collecting that revenue stream. So you'll see that, that makes up about 19% of the license and fees category, but we haven't really gotten into renewals good yet. Permits are coming in strong. We're at about 70% in building permit fees in that category. On the expenditure side, we're just under $55 million in the general fund. All categories are under budget. I will point out, and I think that Daniel pointed this out in a prior month as well, the transfer to the general, I'm sorry, to the capital fund from the general fund and the reserve fund, those were unbudgeted, policy-driven transfers at the end of our audit, based on our year-end numbers and how our audit ended up in making those transfers to those funds. Library Fund for February, we're at about $4.8 million budgeted through February in revenue collections. We're at 4.3, just under 4.3 million dollars in revenue. 97% tax collections. And on the expenditure side, we're at just under $2.7 million in expenditures. In the capital fund, total budget through February is 13,841,578. On the revenue side, we're just at 20 million, just below $20 million in revenue collections, primarily taxes. I will point out, under the other financing sources, in addition to that transfer I mentioned earlier, because the transfer was from the general fund to the capital fund, there's also some sale proceeds in that line item. If you'll notice, the year-to-date number being much higher than the budgeted number, that's because of some sale proceeds that posted in February. On the expenditure side, we're at 5 million, just under 5 million for, 5.4 million dollars on the expenditure side, all under budget. So still working through making those capital purchases through the end of the year. The American Rescue Plan Fund, the total 33 million through the end of February, that includes interest that has been earned on the $31 million that we received from ARPA funding, has been allocated across the different projects that you see on the list. We also note, we also notate on the bottom by project which projects have been completed. So a fair number of those projects have been completed. A few of the projects actually have some savings in those, and I believe some of them will be real, reallocated later on tonight for additional projects or for other projects that have not been completed. Any specific questions there? Certainly let me know. Moving on to the fire fund, we're at 10,195,637 in the fire fund through February. On the revenue side, we're just, just under 8.5 million dollars in collections, about 83.5% collections and taxes. On the expenditure side, we're at 6,648, under budget on all categories and the, on the expenditure side. In the water and sewer fund, the total budgeted water and sewer funder, fund through February is 51,635,582. Total revenue collections through the end of February are 27,404,976 and expenditures at just over $30 million in that fund. If you'll notice the bottom line there, the water and sewer revenue bonds are related to the wastewater treatment plant upgrade and the revenue bonds that have been issued to date for that project. Moving into the water and sewer impact fee fund, this fund is segregated, impact fees for projects specifically authorized to be spent, water and sewer impact fees to be spent on. So we're at 31,462,724 through February. Revenue collections are at 5,358,894 and expenditures are at just over $3 million in that fund. In the stormwater fund, we're at 11,157,333 budgeted revenue and expenditures in the stormwater fund. Just over $5 million in revenue collections through the end of February. Charges for services are coming in strong at about 94%. Expenses on the stormwater side are $3.3 million. You'll see under stormwater projects, that, that $6.2 million is primarily, primarily made up of the bridge replacement project in the stormwater fund. So that project has been, the contract has been executed, but the project hasn't started. In the solid waste fund, through the end of February, we're at 9,493,922 dollars with just over $9 million in revenues and five point, just under 5.2 million dollars in expenditures. The cash report is as follows. I don't believe that normally we go through the cash report, but there's certainly each, by each fund there, the cash balances. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
I wanted, well, it's not really for you. I just, the, I know people hear ARPA and a lot of folks, you hear ARPA and they, they kind of roll up into a little ball. But Mobile Command Post was purchased, broadband service was spread across areas of the county that typically did not have the ability to, to get anything along those lines. Funding with coastal crisis chaplaincy, medical facility in the old detention center in St. George has started. The Wining Wood Reach to get water to Wining Woods, a quick response vehicle program, an ambulance infection control unit, the purchase of two type-two ambulances, funding for the Ladsen Road Fire Station EMS station. We were able to purchase and outfit the building on 17 for a central health and human services where we've got several operations in this building and other operations that we were actually renting property on an annual basis when that rent was going up, that will be in a single building that actually has parking. It's kind of nice and it's, I think, hopefully when we open this summer. Funding for the Jedburg Fire EMS station, body scanner for the detention center. I think when you go through that, it's, it's, they're, they're very clearly, we were, everyone was limited to what they could spend in, for ARPA funds. Some of those limits might have been stretched in certain areas, certainly not in, in this list of things. So thank y'all for what y'all have been able to make happen.
Sure. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Next legitimate, Ms. Baker. Ms. Baker is the Capital Projects Manager and has her hands full with capital projects.
Always a new project. Like every day, there's a new project. So I'm going to start with Ashley River Phase Two, which is the, we had renovations done to the dog park. We actually had more renovations completed on this previous Monday to install additional drainage, which has been great because it really needed it. And I was open back up to the public within a day. We always have a hard time with these reports because they're a little outdated by the time it actually rolls around. And if you have driven through Ashley River recently, you will see that we do have a structure up. The new shelter is up. We're waiting on the roof, which should begin today or tomorrow. So that's great. Excited to see progress on that. On Ashley River Library, we are making significant process, on progress on everything. We've done a lot of the punch list items. They're, they are still working on the turn lane and we're hoping to call for final inspections this week and then we'll start bringing in some FFNE books, things like that over the next few weeks and excited to get it open. The building looks great. So on the connector for ARP and Rosebrook, we're, we're still waiting on pricing from HIT. The county received confirmation in February that the state appropriations would be remitted and they have been remitted and received. On Edisto Lakes, we are currently awaiting revisions from STANTAG based on comments we've received. And then once we receive those initial revisions back, we'll share it internally and then most likely with council to receive comment. And on EOC, we've had substantial completion reached. County has taken occupancy of the building. They are, we're fully functioning as EOC and EMD offices. The data center move-in is in progress and it is waiting on the order placement of a new server. And we're also waiting on dispatch to move later in the spring in coordination with AT&amp;T and Motorola schedules. On HHS, which is the BiLLO project that was just mentioned, we have DSS is painted and the ceiling grid has been installed. Lighting and final finishes are beginning to be installed in the next week. DEHEC floors have been polished and painting will begin in the next week. All of the public defender has been framed out. We'll begin sheet rock work in the next few weeks. Security fence is around the back of the campus. Neighboring apartment complexes complained about wooden fence removal, but county showed the fence was on our property per survey and that building actually looks like a building now and not a big empty warehouse and it's awesome. So Jedburg Fire Station, ADC has completed a site assessment and test fit of proposed property, proposal for geotechnical services. It's currently going through our internal review process. The LEC Phase Three is substantially complete and we have actually moved employees now at this point from Phase Four of the project that was previously occupied into Phase Three, either permanently or temporarily, to move on to Phase Four. We're reviewing the available options with Johnson Locks to address some unsuitable soil conditions before moving forward with paving. The parking lot is outlined in the project scope. On the 500 North Main Project, I believe that the purchase and sale agreement approved was approved by county council. Now staff has conducted kickoff and initial programming meetings for new county office building. No further action is needed by county council to complete the sale. However, there will be a development easement agreement and lease for the county office building that will be brought forth at a later date. On the new coroner's office, we have received some initial specifications from TUCO. We're waiting on the final jock proposal to review internally. And once we have that, we'll be able to move forward and make some, some progress on that project. On Oak Brook Tiff Sports Complex, we have now executed a contract with HIT to construct the sports complex. And we've held a project kickoff call between HIT and Land Plan last week, actually. And a meeting was held with Dominion to discuss field lighting and that is in progress. That was a, a big thing for us. That's a big cost. And on Oak Brook Tiff Streetscaping and Trails, we're still awaiting final plans from Seaman Whiteside and we'll review that internally. Then Pine Trace, the site work is still in progress for this project. We selected Cunningham Recreation to provide the playground equipment and county staff is working with Cunningham on the playground design to incorporate more inclusive equipment, which has been a big ask. So excited about that. That'll be good for us. And on Ridgeville Library, the council approved the MOU at the town of Ridgeville for a joint facility, but there's no additional update at this time. The Veterans Facility, we have now closed on the Veterans Facility as of Friday. So this is a little outdated. Looking forward to working on that. We've reached out to some people on the design proposal and we're going to start working with internal staff and council to determine how we want to use that space. On Summers Corner Fire and EMS, the final set of plans has been received and we are waiting to onboard new jock contractors before we work with Gordy on final pricing. On Somerville Library, an appraisal has been received for the property currently identified as a potential project site. No further action is required at this time. On Swan Drive Park, FHP has begun construction of the dock, which is great. Some of the water levels have kind of hindered a little bit of the progress, but we're still on track to complete the project in the next three to four months, right in time for summertime. And the Troy Knight Building renovations, Phase Two is completed and we have actually began Phase Three, which is started last week and will continue this week. And that is all I have. If anyone has any questions on any projects.
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, Jordan, thank you very much. Great, great job. Do we have any sort of an update with DOT installing a traffic signal at the library in Ashley River Park? Because that is something I think we need to do sooner rather than later. Is that?
I don't currently, and I do agree with you.
Okay.
Just purely out of, going out of there personally.
Absolutely.
We have worked with DOT pretty heavily over the last few weeks in terms of the turn lane in general and having some issues with that. And that is something I can bring back up as point of concern and what we're going to do about that.
Will you do that? And if, if need be, I would like for us to potentially get our delegation involved if that's what we need to do. I, I think that would be very helpful. I know that that probably isn't their first choice, but I don't want to wait on them to decide that it is needed after we've had several accidents or something. So.
Yeah, now I can follow up and I'll follow up, Mr. Ward, to find out the update.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, not as safety relevant, but with the Oak Brook Sports Tiff project, you mentioned Dominion and the lighting. Is there any discussion about repurposing the current or will all of that have to be reconfigured? And is there, well, let you answer that first.
Well, I think that a lot of it is going to be new lighting purely based on what we're trying to standardize to and being able to have a universal system that all speaks to each other. So that's really the primary goal there. I'm not sure. I'm sure there's going to be some ancillary lighting that we're going to reuse, but the brunt of it will be new.
Okay.
The understanding I got from the Y is they're looking at moving that to the ponds, fields.
Okay, awesome.
They're, they're looking at repurposing that, in that aspect.
Very cool. Thanks, sir.
That's, that's what I was told the other day.
All right. Well, then I'm done. Thank you.
Now, Carehart number two.
That's right. Everybody's second favorite Carehart. We, we didn't need confirmation on that. The first project I have for you is the Bridge Replacement Design Build Prep. And that was actually the project that Ms. Nelson was alluding to earlier. So had a chance to speak with her briefly, but we're going to have a follow-up. We exchanged information. We're going to talk about that project some more in depth, specifically the pointer drive bridge replacement. If you remember, we have three bridges as part of that package. The design is underway right now. So we'll, we're starting to have those conversations with the property owners who live in the adjacent area. So that design continues. The First Bin Road and the Rice Mill Drive, I'll take those together. We decided to pursue a RIA grant for those projects, lump them together, have a more competitive package. Unfortunately, we're not going to see a whole lot going on with that until September. We felt financially it was in our best interest to try to pursue that grant and free up some other money that we're having, we have obligated for the principal and interest payments for the bonds for the design build bridges. So we're going to work through the summer to prepare that application. I've actually received the draft application late last week for my review, and so we'll get that submitted by the deadline. Maple Street Widening, the utility window has ended. Dominion has a very small piece that they still need to relocate and AT&amp;T has not relocated. Fortunately, we have had a very good conversation with them last week, two weeks ago, about accelerating their anticipated schedule. So now it looks like they're going to be finishing at the end of March. So while the utilities are being wrapped up, we're still proceeding with as much as construction, specifically drainage, design, clearing, that sort of thing that we can. Sawmill Branch Trail Extension, we held the design field review on February the 26th. We also have completed preliminary plans. With those preliminary plans, we can now have HDR put in their H&amp;H model to see what the, if there's any mitigation that we need to take place as a result of the impacts. So that's a parallel path while we move forward with right away, well, 70% and final construction plans. We're also meeting with the Parks Commission to discuss some bridge options. We want things to look as uniform and have everybody the, the opportunity to weigh in on it and see what they like. So we'll be working with the Parks Commission here in the, I think it's the next week when, when they meet. So we'll be presenting that. We also met with parks for the town and the county last week to discuss where we are with the project, some signage, stuff like that. Just try to keep everything uniform and make sure that all parties involved are up to date. SC 27 Widening, we have closed on four tracks now. We still have several left to go. There may be some connotations coming for council's approval. We'll keep you updated on that. We have a few comments that we're working with the DOT on some final plans. And then once we can get that wrapped up, we'll submit to DEHEC for an expedited review. Then hopefully we'll see construction advertised probably early. we'll see construction advertised probably early to late fall. Wallace High and Turner Lane, we are now twenty-six days into this contract. That means that the contractor has about sixty-four days left to complete the project. It is a ninety-day duration. I think it can still be done in sixty-four days, but the clock has begun. Our last correspondence with them, they said they're going to start the signal work, the work to the traffic signal, late this week, and then once they mobilize out there, they'll, they'll be mobilized on full, full speed and hopefully push through the project and meet their deadline. And with that, be more than happy to answer any questions. All right, thank you.
How you doing this evening, Mr. Harper?
I live the dream because I work for Dorchester County, so I'm doing well. On March eighteen, seventeen sixty-six, the British Parliament repealed the Stamp Act that required tax stamps on all legal documents. The Stamp Act was one of the leading causes of the Revolutionary War. So, with that. Phase Two Stratton and Barrett Street Rehab, we've got our final revisions done on those plans. The plans are now ready for, matter of fact, they were signed today, our engineers signed them today, and we are getting ready to put that out to bid, hopefully in the next twenty days. Town Flow Well, as soon as the contractor finishes up at the Reesville Well, which is scheduled to be complete this week, he will be moving on that site to finish up the VFD work on that location. For DSS, the pump station for Force Main, Phase One easements are still in progress. We are actually just missing just one easement from Mungo Homes. We're having discussions with those guys this week to resolve that issue and get those easements. Edisto Tribal Council, we are complete on that project. I can celebrate because that's been a long one, just waiting for the final closeout documents, so this will actually be disappearing off our list of discussions. Lower Dorchester Expansion, I'm happy to announce that on April twenty-sixth of this year, we will move from eight MGD to ten MGD capacity. I had it scheduled, by the way. The contract is also continuing to form and port the base labs for the Aeration Basins, and that progress for the Aeration Basins will continue throughout the month of March. So, if you hear complaints or wondering what's going on there, those, a lot of those pores are occurring about two AM in the morning, just because of the length of time that's required to try to beat the traffic is what's going on. For Maple Street Relocates, we have two outstanding east, the two outstanding easements have been recorded with great help from deputy and county attorneys. Really appreciate Joe's efforts again to resolve for us. Well, for Popular Grove and Red Top, we've got all our easements acquired, the permits have been, all permit applications have been submitted, and we're actually beginning to receive all the permits so we can get that project constructed. For Pump Station One Fifteen, that's another project that we can declare complete. We've actually issued the formal pay application, and we'll be removing this project off the list. For Pump Station Seventy-two Upgrade, contractor is working on the wall section for the wet well for that project. This is, this will probably be completed by the end of March. So, if you haven't had a chance to ride by Pump Station Seventy-two located at Ashley Ridge High School, it's an oppressive hole in the ground, which you may want to take a peek at. For Pump Station Ten Rehabilitation, we have actually found, finally completed the review of the information. We've got several different projects that are scheduled to come out of that. That actually addresses some INI issues in that Pump Station Ten area. Reesville Well, contractor is working on completing that VFD. We are really excited about that, so that project will also be coming off the list. For Summer Haven Water Lines, we have actually submitted permit applications now for that particular project and trying to get that scheduled for construction sometime before summer. And for the Water Main Extension from DC Career School down to Harleville Middle and Elementary Schools, we are working on completing those plans. The only thing that's outstanding is meter vaults designed from the engineer for the Lake Marion. They're just kind of revising it for us because we've got certain requirements by being that close to the school. And for the Winding Woods Reach Project, the tank is complete. We're waiting to get water to the tank due to an issue with the Winding Woods Reach waterline contractor. He continues to pressure test repair leaks, but they have set the Woodland High School meter vault and also the Ridgeway Meter Station are set and tied in, but they definitely need to be, are pressure tested before we turn the valve and then receive water to those meter stations. And with that, that concludes my report. If there are any questions, be more than happy to answer.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Harper, the water tower at Winding Woods is very pretty, nice color scheme.
We chose those colors, I wish I did have a choice. Notice, those, the people who are famed, love that orange color. We were actually required by FAA due to the location of the St. George Airport.
It, it is not a Tennessee orange. It's very similar to an orange from either Clemson University, if you're local, if you're from off, it's Florida A&amp;M.
Actually, it's very close to the Florida name.
I'm speaking Florida A&amp;M, sir, but.
But definitely not Howard colors.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda is county administrator time. I'd like to recognize Mr. Jason Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a few items for council's consideration this evening. The first is a first reading of an ordinance to amend and supplement the Code of Ordinances, Dorchester County, South Carolina, by deleting Chapter fourteen, Article three, Section fourteen dash sixty-five and substituting in lieu thereof a new Section fourteen dash sixty-five with subsection A and B, prohibited nuisances. I will ask for first reading and that you refer this item to the Public Safety, Health and Human Services Committee to hold a public hearing and recommendation. Purpose in this is to update definitions for prohibited nuisances with languages, with language including covering issues such as the accumulation of tires, and then also adding additional language on pest control with respect to areas with standing water where we can reduce mosquitoes, flies, and the other insect population.
So, move.
Second.
I got a first by Councilman Chenness and a second by Councilman Rank. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item I have for your consideration is a request for approval to allocate thirty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ten dollars from savings in the American Rescue Plan Act Fund to extend the Coastal Crisis Chaplaincy partnership until June thirty, twenty twenty-four, the end of the fiscal year. Ask for your approval. These savings came from a CAD project that came in under cost.
Second.
I got a first by Councilman Holman and a second by Councilman Hearn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven oh vote.
Third and final item I have for your consideration is a request for approval of an amendment to the Solid Waste Fee Collection Agreement that Dorchester County has with the town of Somerville. Long story short, we had a meeting with the town, we've had this agreement in place since twenty-twelve. Our like agreements for the collection of stormwater fees are at five percent. Since this time, since this agreement was originally approved, we've added a portal, additional functionality in terms of the editing of bills and running of reports by the town, and we will ask for your approval with the understanding that the town plans to have this on an agenda in April for their approval.
Somerville.
Second.
I got a first by Councilman Rank and a second by Councilman Chenness. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven oh vote. Next one, Jim, I'd like to discuss the Water and Sewer Committee meeting that happened at five forty-five this evening. Request for approval for new sewer service by Somerville Logistics Center owner, South Carolina LLC for Somerville Logistics Center, TMS number one twenty-nine, dash zero zero, dash zero zero, dash zero four eight, located at the Eastport Commerce Center near the town of Somerville. It was a seven oh vote. You've heard the recommendation of council, all in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Thanks, sir. At this time, do we have any appointments to board your commissions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to reappoint Mr. Brad Mallett to the Economic Development Corporation for directors.
Second.
You got a first, a second, any discussion?
I need a cup of coffee to pump up.
Hope Brad's low hanging fruit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven oh vote. We have any other appointments?
No.
Good.
I have a motion.
You have a motion? Councilwoman Holman, what's?
What, I wanted, are we finished with the board and appointments?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then I wanted to, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to request that we move or defer, refer the Dorchester Senior, Inc., new senior center site executive session to our next council meeting on April the first in St. George.
We have a, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second, and the motion, motion is to defer, is that correct?
To defer, I'm sorry, yeah, to defer.
Got a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It has been deferred. Next on the agenda, I don't know if the county minister, the county attorney's time, Mr. Frampton has anything.
I got nothing to say.
I, I didn't know the motions.
You got a, you got a motion?
Our motion will adjourn.
Second.
You got a motion adjourned and a second, all in favor? We're now adjourned, have a great evening.
Mr. Frampton, you were supposed to go, you were supposed to go.